Okay, I think we're ready to get started on the Urbana City Council meeting. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Barnes?
Here.
Mr. Bowersox?
Here.
Ms. Chenoweth?
Present.
Mr. Lewis?
Present.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Smythe?
Ms. Stevenson?
Present.
Mayor Pressing?
Here.
First item is approval of minutes of the previous meeting. That would be April 16th. Motion by Mr. Roberts, second by Mr. Lewis. Any discussion of the minutes? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved. Are there any additions to the agenda? Okay. Next would be petitions and communications. I have cards from four people who would like to address the council. And if anyone else would like to talk to the council, please fill out a little card and give it to the city clerk. Phil's Clark. First, Bridget Peek. Did I pronounce your name correctly? I mangled your name, I'm sorry. Well, you can come up and tell us how to say your name and your address, please. Brigita? Brigita, right? Okay, sorry.
I answer to all versions, that's okay.
Okay.
Good evening, my name is Brigita Peekle. And I am here to ask your permission to get the parking variance for 311 West Springfield. I'm intending to put a small yarn store there, and I'm very excited about the project. I, it is in downtown Urbana, and I am very much hoping that I will increase the foot traffic in town, because it is right across from Strawberry Fields and a lot of people walk there. So, that would be wonderful. I myself would like to walk, because I live within six blocks. And I think the parking variance would be not a problem, because there's already a car parked there in a residential situation. And this is just to ask if that is to fulfill the requirement that it is a commercial one. And as I said, there's a lot of foot traffic already, and I'm hoping to increase it, and I'm very excited about my retirement project as well.
Okay.
Do you have questions for me?
Bill Gray, does this need to go to the Parking Commission? Isn't that where it should go? She's asking for a variance on a street.
It's on the agenda.
Oh, it is on the agenda. Okay, sorry.
It's in Springfield.
Oh, all right. Well, we'll get to that. Well, I'm glad you're in favor of this. Are you the one that initiated it?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Any questions? Mr. Roberts.
Let's see. Okay, so I know that house. I've, it's right across the street, basically, from Strawberry Fields.
Yes.
Will there be any, besides the parking question, I'm just curious, it would, it's right now it's a residence and it would take some renovation, or you're going to, will there be changes to the structure or the appearance of the house?
Yeah. I asked Andrew Fell to come and assess the situation, and he sent a letter to Community Development that there is no need to do that from, and I think he also talked with Steve Cohen. And so, there is no need to do that, because the area is really small. It is under around 450 square feet for the retail, and that is not required to do that. I will paint that house.
Okay.
So, I will improve that situation there. I will paint it and put a new heating and air conditioning situation in there.
There's probably room in that driveway for a couple of cars. Do you expect cars to be parked, double parked there, or not, or?
No, not really. I, I'm sorry. I, I think it will be just one, because if somebody else wants to park there, I would discourage them. But if, if they do, then I would ask them, this is a very small enterprise, and if people come in there, I can talk to them and say, "Did you also park in there?" Then, they need to go out.
Yeah.
So, I think that can be addressed.
Thank you.
Mr. Bowersox?
The one other thing I just wanted to ask and make sure you were aware of, as you probably are, is that in Urbana, you can get a ticket if you park your car across the sidewalk and blocking the right-of-way, and especially in downtown where there's lots, okay.
Yes, I'm aware of that.
You know where. Great. Thanks.
Any other questions? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is Mike Doyle.
Could I let Bob Leach go first, because I think he's there?
Bob Leach.
Hello. Hello? Okay. I'm Bob Leach, 910 North Broadway, and I'm speaking on behalf of Ucan. Ucan has been studying Carl Hospital's proposals for expansion, and has developed a rather long list of neighborhood concerns, which we are in the process of prioritizing. Thanks to Mayor Pressing, we will be working with some U of I Urban Planning students to come up with a comprehensive plan for the neighborhood that hopefully will help the city and Carl as they negotiate a new expansion plan. So, we're busy working on this. I just wanted to report that. Questions?
Mr. Roberts?
Not so much a question, but you know, it's always really helpful for us to get the Neighborhood Association input, and the fact that you're thinking about having a comprehensive plan, I guess that's what you were saying. Is that specifically on the expansion question, or is it going to be more comprehensive than that?
I think more comprehensive than that. But from our perspective, it's hard to do a lot of planning in the neighborhood without kind of knowing what Carl is going to do and what they have in mind, because it impacts the neighborhood so much.
Mm-hmm.
But yes, it'll be for the, there'll be other components to it besides just Carl's expansion.
Well, good for you. We look forward to seeing it.
Thank you.
Danielle Chenoweth?
I have a question for you. It seems like our city staff and our council relies on email frequently to update folks through the Neighborhood Associations. And I just wanted to check with you to see if, does Ucan have a listserv? And if not, do you feel like you have adequate mechanisms to let the folks in Ucan and around the Carl Hospital neighborhood know, not only about Carl-related things, but also city things? How's the communication going from the city's perspective?
We have an extensive mailing list. We have a newsletter. Certain things will go out if, if there's a time problem, will go out on email, but not everyone in the group has the email. And sometimes we'll do phone trees. I get everything, you know, from the city, and I believe Nancy, I get those at home. And I think Nancy gets them at the office, too.
Okay. So, your membership, for example, is aware of the Boneyard Study in downtown that's happening now, and the bike workshop that happened last weekend, and some of the things that are coming up regularly in terms of getting public input. The, the membership is aware of those activities?
When I get things at home personally, or I guess in my capacity as president of Ucan, if it's pertinent, then it'll go in the newsletter for the next meeting.
Thank you very much. Mike Doyle?
My name's Mike Doyle, and I live at 411 West Park in Urbana. As Bob mentioned, I'm a member of Ucan, and we're meeting in the neighborhood and want to thank, I know some city council people have been out, the mayor's been out to some of our meetings, which have been lively discussions. I guess until the Ucan's ready to come forward sort of with their concerns, questions, recommendations, I just wanted to give a couple of thoughts on background. I know most people here were not on the council at the time when the first development agreement was signed in 1996, 11 years ago. So, I just wanted to raise a couple of things as a perspective as this moves forward over the next few months, that I think are important lessons that I think people in the neighborhood learned and just like to share with the city council. In 93, you know, a lot of, Ucan actually got started when Carl proposed closing Park Street in 1993, and it came without any public hearings and was sort of pushed through. And it wasn't a very pleasant experience, and I know, I was hoping Charlie would be here, because he was quoted in the paper as saying, "He felt bad about pushing it down." Although I support the project, I don't see why we have to shove it down the neighborhood's throat. And I think people in the neighborhood very much felt that way. But one of the main arguments at the time for closing Park Street was the need for an outpatient surgery center that Carl said needed to be on the first floor of the North Tower, and that therefore to get back and forth in the buildings, they really didn't get a bridge over, they had to be on the same floor. And it required that they close Park Street. And I know that held a lot of sway, in terms of Carl saying that was the only way to solve the problem. Today, if you go to the outpatient surgery center, it's not located on Park Street, it's located in southwest Champaign. And I think one of the things that we learned is what is promised and what is said to be "it's the only way we can solve this problem" often isn't necessarily the only way it can be solved. And in fact, that case, the only way that the issue could be addressed was by closing Park Street. In fact, Carl changed their plans and built the outpatient surgery center in southwest Champaign. So, I think that's just one lesson, is that throughout this process, you'll probably hear, "There is no better way, this is the only way that we can do this." And I hope the council would remain open to pushing for seeing alternative proposals, alternative plans. How else could this be thought through? Because sometimes you won't get that at the first blush of the presentation. The other thing I think is important to understand, back in 93, our neighborhood was very much a neighborhood at risk. There were lots of rental housing, they were deteriorated, they were rundown, property values were falling. As a result of the plan that was developed, houses were sold off by Carl, single-family, there was programs set up to help single families buy those homes, to fix them up. And it's really revitalized our neighborhood and strengthened it in a lot of ways. And again, I think from that experience, that this is really a process that we need to build on from before. It shouldn't be just built around Carl's needs. I think it really helps if the city, and I know people on the council go open to this, look at this as an opportunity, what's best for the neighborhood. Carl certainly has their perspective on it, but it's not the only perspective, and it shouldn't drive what we do as we move forward with this. The third point, and there's four, so halfway there, had to do with the '95 agreement that was signed. It was a compromise between Carl, the city, and the neighborhood about what was the best way to develop the area and help everyone address their needs, and all parties agreed to that. It was stuff where there was compromises, though. And one of the big things that the neighborhood at the time wanted was to shut down the medical waste incinerator located in our residential area. At the time, Carl insisted that they would oppose any, any agreement with the city that included anything having to do with the medical waste incinerator. So, the agreement went forward without anyone addressing that. Fortunately, two years later, Ucan led a local campaign to shut down the incinerator, and Carl eventually shut down the medical waste incinerator, the first in the state of Illinois. Today, all medical waste incinerators are being phased out under state law, and there'll be no more medical waste incinerators. Again, the lesson is sometimes residents in the neighborhood have as much understanding of what would benefit the community, and can build a consensus around positive things that we can do. And I guess, I know one of the big issues that you're going to be looking at here on Carl's proposal, at least has been presented so far, is parking. And where are we going to have all these cars go that are going to keep coming into the neighborhood? I hope you can take a look at what the neighborhood residents, and look beyond just this immediate status quo, this is how things are, how do we accommodate how things are, and think about a green development, one that has trip reduction, reduction in it. Things that can make it more amenable, more pleasant in the neighborhood, more environmentally friendly, rather than just looking at where we're going to put all these cars, and how many homes do we have to tear down to build parking lots. There are alternatives out there, and I hope those make it to the discussion. And then finally, I think it's important for everyone to understand that our neighborhood has been, has felt very mistreated over the years, and nothing against this council. But when the first Park Street closing happened, there was no public hearing. It was voted on the night before city election, of which everyone was afraid that the current administration would win again if they didn't vote that way. So, they closed the street without any public hearing. They did pass an ordinance that night to say, "In the future, when we close streets, there should be a public hearing." When the next development agreement happened, and they closed Orchard Street, a second time, the neighborhood felt we got sort of the short shrift on how things played out. And I refer to articles in the News Gazette on July 18th and August 15th of 1995, when it was pointed out that in fact it takes a super majority of the city council to vacate streets, which requires six out of the seven votes. And the city council figured out a way to get around that, I shouldn't say the city council, the administration at the time, by temporarily vacating the street for Carl to use as they want for a certain number of years. And they got around the state law that requires a super majority to close those streets with just a simple majority of four votes. I hope this city council recognizes how that consoler a neighborhood when they feel like they're being worked around. I think, I don't know if the singer is here, but he was quoted in the newspaper back then of saying, "I think it would be a serious mistake to try and take a legally dubious and run around the law. If it takes six votes to vacate a street, they ought to get the six votes to vacate the street." Of course, our city attorney at the time, Jack Waller, argued why a simple majority could legally close a street without vacating it. I think eventually they did it when they took out the language where Carl was insisting that the city repay Carl for any changes if they wanted to reopen the street. Although that was a nice concession on their part, I think from a neighborhood's point of view, we hope that you'll live up to the standards in the state law, and if we're going to be vacating the number of streets Carl wants to vacate, that the city council will go by the state law, which requires a super majority, and not find a way of using a smaller threshold to bring about those changes. Again, we look forward to working with all of you on this, and we're very excited about the opportunity of making improvements in our neighborhood and facilitating that change.
Thank you. Any questions for Mike Doyle?
Thanks.
Thanks. Next, Jean Burns.
I don't have much of a public speaking, so excuse me. My name is Jean Burns. I live at 805 West Hill Street in Urbana. I'm a resident of a very affected area. I live in a small, comfortable, affordable house that allows me to be financially independent, take care of my needs, and still remain part of the community, which I think is so important. I've written you a few letters, which I hope you've read, and I will be very brief, I won't go into the details, but pretty much that's how I feel. I don't intend to move. I can't move. I can't afford to move. In fact, I was talking to a young man who just bought a house directly across the street from me, the north side of Hill. And he said to me, "I bought this house, and I looked for a long time, because it was affordable, and I liked the established neighborhood." Now, he and I were talking just a little bit. He said, "I heard something on the radio that they're going, Carl is going to take over the neighborhood." And I said, "Well, as a community, we're going to try very hard to convince them that the most important thing is the community and the people that live there." It's a nice neighborhood. I think I've even written in my letter, "Come visit us. You're always welcome." And thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Any questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks. Anyone else want to address the council? Okay, let's move on. Old business. Ordinance number 2007-03-031, an ordinance amending Chapter 14 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Urbana regarding the schedule of fees. Delora, did you want to address that?
The schedule has, sorry. The schedule has been on file as the ordinance requires for 30 days with the city clerk's office. We have had no input about the schedule or any of the fees. And if, unless the council has any changes they would like to make, then we need to approve it and move it forward.
Danielle Chenoweth?
I'd like to, let's see, I'd like to move the, what is it, an ordinance? An, the ordinance has written with one change, and that change is to keep under 5D, to keep the camera operator and building monitor fees consistent with what they have been. So, the proposal is a 50% increase, and it would just keep the first hour at 35 and additional hours at 20. And other changes would be accepted. That's my motion.
I second that motion. Okay. Motion by Ms. Chenoweth to make a modification on the ordinance. Yes.
If I could just speak to, actually, the motion is, is the ordinance with that, with that modification to the staff proposal. Having, having looked at how much it costs, well, first, having looked at how much people use the council chambers, which is, at this point, still insufficient. It's a great community meeting place, and it's, it's not used as much as it should be. Second, looking at some of the reasons why that is, and cost has been one of the reasons why community groups don't use council chambers to the extent that they would. And also looking at the cost of our overhead, our internal overhead for camera operators, which is really, you know, on the level of $7 to $10 an hour. I believe that, although I do agree that we should be looking at increases in fees to keep up with inflation, and I support that, in this particular instance, I feel like a 50% jump is going to actually be an additional barrier to people using a public space that is underutilized. And so, I'd like to keep that fee as it is.
There is no fee for using the room, though, right?
Actually, there is a fee if you're not a UP-TV member, and there isn't a fee if you are a UP-TV member. So, there are fees associated with using the space. And then, if you would like to have it broad, your meeting broadcast over UP-TV, you would pay, in the old situation, which is what I'm proposing, $35 for the first hour for a camera operator, and $20 per hour for, for subsequent. So, you know, a meeting where you can broadcast on UP-TV is about $50 to $60, which is something you can recoup by passing the hat. But if you are looking at $75 to $100 or above, then you're really looking at a situation where you need, you know, the U of I to sponsor your, you know, or source funding or something like that to sponsor it. And so, I just, I don't want it to be cost prohibitive, that people use a public space that they paid for building.
Mr. Roberts?
Okay, I, I think that's a good catch, Danielle. I think we are trying to have higher use of the public on the facilities for UP-TV, and we're trying to encourage the creation of new programming, which, you know, is perhaps, perhaps a daunting experience if you don't have very much background in that kind of operation, or if you have a very small group that perhaps doesn't have a large budget, and you still want to be participating in public television. So, if you don't have the equipment to do your own filming, and you come to the studio, I think it behooves the, the city to make it as affordable as possible for as many people, so I support your comments.
Anyone else? Okay. All those in favor of approving this ordinance as, with the one change?
Aye.
Well, I guess we know we need a roll call, right? It's an ordinance. Okay. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowersox?
Yes.
Ms. Chenoweth?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Okay, the ordinance is approved. Reports of standing committees.
That would be my, okay. Reporting for the committee of the whole that met on the fourth week in April, forwarded to council, I recommend the approval of ordinance number 2007-04-035. This is an ordinance amending Schedule J of Section 23-183 of the Urbana Local Traffic Code prohibiting parking at all times on certain streets, and this concerns Wright Street South. So, for the committee, I move approval.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Roberts, seconded by Ms. Barnes. Is there any discussion? Ms. Stevenson?
When making these traffic code prohibiting parking at certain times, I want to make sure that they're marked, because I had a constituent call me the other day. He got a ticket in a place where there was no parking, but there was no, a no parking, there was a day no parking sign posted. And so, he got a ticket, not knowing that he couldn't park where he was parked. So, I just want to make sure that as we pass these, that signs are placed appropriately so that people aren't getting tickets unknowingly for parking in places.
Would that have been a missing sign?
I don't know. There was no post or anything.
Okay. All right. Any other questions or comments? Did you want to say something, Lynn? Okay. If not, would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowersox?
Yes.
Ms. Chenoweth?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Okay, the ordinance is approved. I don't believe we have any reports of special committees. Reports of officers. We have Tom Carino, our Economic Development Director, to give us the extended economic development report.
While there are a lot of activities that fall under the umbrella of economic development, the program that you have before you tonight is concentrated mostly on development projects and activity. So, with that, I'll get started. Right now, the City of Urbana has a good, healthy mix of new development and redevelopment projects that are happening, as well as a good, healthy mix between residential and non-residential development. And I'll go into a little bit of that right now. The first project I'd like to talk to you about is the Point at U of I, which is by CTC Development, and that is at the southeast corner of Philo Road and Florida. That is a project that's involved in a public-private partnership with a development agreement with the City of Urbana. That is the former Kmart site, and the project is moving forward, and it's moving forward at a good pace. You've seen some residential buildings going up at that location already, and you will see a commercial building. It's 192 and three-bedroom luxury rental units, as well as 12,000 square feet of retail space, which again, you should see the retail going up relatively soon. The next project is the Pines at Stone Creek Commons, which is at the southeast corner of Philo Road and Windsor Road. That is a project being done by the Atkins Group, and it is upscale retail shops. One outlot has been sold to Monacles, which they have announced, and they are doing some inline shops, retail space, that will be ready for occupancy in fall of 2007, according to the Atkins Group. Gateway Shops is a project that you've seen some activity on. That is the former O'Brien site. That is also a public-private partnership through TIF Development Agreement. That is also upscale retail shops. It's at the northwest corner of University and Cunningham. That development has four outlots, and one of which is purchased by the University of Illinois Credit Union. And like I said, as you've seen, site work is underway at that site. The next project I'd like to talk about is Gregory Place 2, which is being done by JSM Development. That project is on the east side of Gregory, between Nevada and Oregon, and that is across from Gregory Place 1. This project is going to have 54,000 square feet of gross commercial space with 140 luxury residential units. It's going to have first-floor retail, second-floor office, and three floors of residential above that. Prairie Winds is a project that's happening off of Philo Road that is being done by Tatman and Horvath Development. There are 29 single-family home sites, some of which have been developed, 42-unit active adult community, most of which has been developed at this point, and then 92-unit affordably-priced senior living facility that did have their grand opening ribbon-cutting, that would be late in April when that happened. So, and so, all facets of this development are moving forward. The Mills Breast Cancer Institute and Carl Cancer Center is going to be a 105,000-square-foot facility. This is part of Carl's effort to have centers of excellence, and there will be a research partnership housed there with the University of Illinois, and it will involve translational research, which will translate into benefits in care to patients at a relatively quick Starbucks is at the northeast corner of Main Street and Vine Street. This is part of a development that's in conjunction with a Schnucks Service Center. This is an outlot at the Schnucks Supermarket downtown, and it will be opening fall of 2007. Amber Point is being done by CTC Development. It's among the highest-quality rental units in Urbana. research, which will translate into benefits in care to patients at a relatively quick pace. Starbucks is at the northeast corner of Main Street and Vine Street. This is part of a development that's in conjunction with a Schnucks Service Center. This is an outlot at the Schnucks Supermarket downtown, and it will be opening fall of 2007. Amber Point is being done by CTC Development. It's among the highest-quality rental units in Urbana. There are several existing buildings, as well as several buildings, under construction, so this has been a great project for the area. Those were, for the most part, projects that are under construction. Now, I'll get into projects that are about to enter construction and are in the planning stages. The Meyer Site, you've probably seen some site work going on there. This project's going to have extensive landscaping, pedestrian access, and bicycle access. They are considering a new prototype for this location that they have not tried elsewhere, so we are working with them to get the, that building together. There are outlots at this location as well, including a service station, and it's expected that the store will open in mid-2008. Menards is a large project happening on the east end of Urbana along High Cross Road. It's a 300-acre commercial residential development. The residential includes townhome-type units, as well as single-family residential. City staff is working with Menards on an annexation development agreement right now. The Menards store should be opening sometime in 2008, and then, Menards is also going to be developing additional commercial space, working with other retailers to do that. Orchard Downs, there was a presentation last week from the two development groups that are vying for this project. Both development groups are emphasizing sustainability in the project, and there will be an open house on May 16th from 5:30 to 8 o'clock at the Alice Campbell Alumni Center, and that will be kind of styled as an open house where people can go in, speak to the two development groups, and ask some questions of them. The Grand Oaks Luxury Condominiums are at the Urbana Dolphin Country Club. It's being done by Schneider Development. It's approximately 80 units, and they will be ranging in price from $215,000 to $450,000. Marketing for this project is really just starting in earnest. They're going to be working on some signage, as well as some advertising and some publications. Carl Clinic on Windsor is approximately a 68,000-square-foot building. Basic site work has started at this point. You may have seen some dirt being moved out there, and it is at the northeast corner of Windsor Road and Myra Ridge. Walgreens is planning a new outlot development at Sunny Crest Mall, and we're hoping that the sale of this outlot will be a catalyst for some work at Sunny Crest Mall. So, that's kind of an exciting project for the area. Lincoln Square Village has a new signage program, and we are also meeting with the owner this week to talk about potential tenants, and hopefully see how the city can get involved in securing additional tenants at that site. The Kerr Avenue Redevelopment Project is planned to be a national model of neighborhood, a neighborhood for affordable and energy-efficient housing. The Foreign Associates out of Chicago was selected to work on that project, and we do have a design sharet coming up at the end of May for that project. Just to talk generally about some single-family residential development, these are just some of the single-family subdivisions that are going on right now, and you see a wide range of housing, all single-family housing, but a different range of styles and price points. Aside from some of the development that's going on, we generally coordinate with the Urbana Business Association, and also the Champaign County Chamber of Commerce to coordinate ribbon cuttings for new businesses. Some of the businesses that have opened recently, American General and A Cut Above are at the Five Points East Shopping Center. Downstate Title and Bella Home are both on Main Street, and Carpet Advantage is in the East Urbana Industrial Park. More 2007 ribbon cuttings include Heartland Gallery, which is also on Main Street. Latte Dot is the new coffee shop at the Urbana Free Library. Ethnic Expressions is at Five Points East. We already talked a little bit about Prairie Winds. Rosati's is at Gregory Place One, and Manolo's is across the street from Crannert Center. Specifically, new Main Street businesses, again, include Downstate Title, Heartland Gallery, and Bella Home, and we're also working with a couple of new businesses, specifically a restaurant that wants to locate on Main Street. Aside from ribbon cuttings, an economic development function is retention efforts, as well as contacting developers. This is just a short list of people we've met with and businesses that we've met in retention efforts. Retention visits that we do, we try to solve problems for businesses, and we also try to catch issues before they become problems, to keep our existing businesses here in Urbana. We have a lot of exciting things going on in Urbana, but we also have our challenges and opportunities. We promote redevelopment and facade improvements, as well as facilitate teneting at sites all over the city, and downtown specifically, and all over the city. There are some properties that do need some assistance in, with facade work, redevelopment, and teneting. Sunny Crest Mall, some of the other businesses, or some of the other buildings along Philo Road, South Gate, which is the former Jerry's IGA, the former Jewel Building, the stretch on Washington between Philo and Learman. There are just some properties out there that we're going to do everything we can to help redevelop those properties, give them, get them facelifts, and get them tenanted. We also are going to be working to improve the appearance of major corridors in the city. Philo Road, Cunningham Avenue, and University Avenue all have some type of streetscape or beautification effort in, in the works, so we're going to be working to get that done. Before I go to questions, I would like to add that on May 9th at 7:00 PM, we are having a Boneyard Public Input Meeting. Again, that's May 9th, this Wednesday, at 7:00 PM, and that's going to be at the Civic Center. And then, the First Market at the Square will be this Saturday, May 12th, and we're very excited about the upcoming season. So, if anyone has any questions, I sure try to answer those questions the best of my ability. Thanks.
Lynn Barnes?
First of all, thank you very much for preparing this.
Sure.
It was a good summary, and it's very positive. A lot of it's very positive. As far as some of the challenges are concerned, with regard to Jerry's IGA, you know, like with the Chris Creek Development, I believe we assisted in tearing down the old Kmart building.
Sure.
Is that something that we've considered in terms of maybe making that property more attractive, to, you know, put some city money into that, so that we'd maybe have a better chance of getting a developer?
We, we keep in regular contact with the owner of that property. The owner of the property is actually a company out of Philadelphia. They do have a local real estate representative, and we've, we keep in touch with both the owner in Philadelphia, as well as the local real estate representative. They, up until this point, the Jerry's IGA site actually had an active lease. Kroger was actually still paying lease on that building, so there was no incentive for the owner or their local representative necessarily to get the site redeveloped, and that the bills were still being paid. That lease has now ended in March of this year, and we've been in contact, again, with the ownership and the local representative, and I think there is an opportunity for us to work with them on something there, although they, we, we met with the local representative about a month ago, and they hadn't talked about any plans in the works. I think, honestly, what they're waiting to see is they know there's a lot of positive momentum on Philo Road, specifically at the Meyer location, and then, on the north end of Philo Road at the Point at U of I, and I think what they're waiting to see is what else is happening along the corridor, and what kind of return on investment can we get if we were to invest in this property?
Two other quick questions. With regard to the Chris Creek Development, the Point at U of I, has he made any progress, do you know, in terms of retail for the 12,000 square feet?
He has talked to us about the fact that he has a, although he has not released the name, he said he has a national sandwich shop lined up for that location, but that does not take the entire 12,000 square feet. I'm not sure if he's, he said he had a couple of things in the works, but he hasn't released anything to us.
And is that, is the retail section, like, right now, the apartment buildings are being built, and they're looking good, and, so, is the retail kind of tucked inside the apartment buildings, or is it really, is it closer?
It's, it's going to front on Philo Road.
Good.
It'll be south of the existing building, which is the animal care facility.
Okay.
Just to the south of that, it'll front on Philo Road. I don't know if there, right now, there is connection in the parking lot to go back and forth, but I don't know if there'll be a connection between the commercial and the residential, or if there'll be vehicular interconnection. Pedestrians will be able to go back and forth, but I'm not sure what the plan is for the...
And then, lastly, with regard to Savannah Green, I noticed that there are four houses, five houses, I think, being built and almost done.
Yep.
Clearly, I don't know, probably, opportunity for 30 more or so. I don't know exactly. When you say in your report that, I think I read it in the other report, that Savannah Green is now approved to finish that area, is that, do you mean that whole area is now ready to go?
Yes, I, the, the homes that you see actually under construction right now might actually be Lincolnwood, which is, is that the, it's, it's right near Savannah Green, but on Michigan? Does that sound?
No, I think that the four homes, but right up against the last street, the most west street in Savannah Green.
Savannah Green was...
They look, they look very similar to the Savannah Green homes.
Sure, sure. Things, I, I know that the, there, there had always been the plan to build homes to finish out Savannah Green. It was wrapped up in, in some complications, and those complications are behind us now, and the, the developer is ready to move forward.
Good, with the completion of that entire area, because there's still a pretty, you know, very significant western piece that's not developed, and then, and then also, just east of Savannah Green that just, you know, they haven't finished off, you know, the, just the whole thing. They haven't really tidied it up.
Recently completed the, the park, and, and their plan is to, to finish out the rest of the subdivision.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Sure.
Brandon Bowersox?
With the Meyer store, I was wondering if you could announce in any way what the, what the changes are now that we know it's a new store prototype, and does that mean it's smaller, or has different impacts on the neighborhood, or doesn't have grocery or general merchandise? What can you say that...
We don't have anything from them yet on the new prototype, other than there is a new prototype coming.
Okay.
My understanding is that the, the building itself will be very similar. It will be a little smaller in the range of 175,000 square feet, as opposed to 200,000 square feet. My understanding is that they're going to be minimizing, probably, the outdoor slash garden areas will be smaller. I can tell you, they, they are likely not going to minimize the profitable areas of the store. They're probably looking to reduce the nonprofitable areas of the store, and that's, we, we just don't know at this point. Other than just some anecdotal and verbal conversations, I don't think we have anything submitted yet for the new prototype.
Okay, thank you.
Dennis Roberts?
Yeah, I had two questions. One of them was actually about the same store. I, I was imagining in my mind that the new prototype actually might include a new consciousness in green construction. I'm wondering, since they are like a major building, and they're going to have a huge utility bill, and, you know, significant investment, have they talked to us about, you know, any kind of technology plans that they're going to include in the store that would be saving in the area of utilities and...
They, they have discussed some of their techniques, and what they've told us is that their buildings are very close to LEED certification already. The buildings that they generally design, at least the ones that they've designed recently, and the reason for that is to, to, to save money on utilities. There, there is, I'm sure there is an altruistic motive, but at the same time, it's, it improves the bottom line for them to build energy-efficient buildings. And my understanding is that their buildings are already very close to LEED certification. I don't know if we've requested of them that they actually, they actually obtain LEED certification for this building. I don't know if they've offered to do that, but they are, according to them, very close to that already, with some of their design.
Okay. My other question was the replacement of the banner sign for Bella Home. It was up for a couple of days, and we had that extremely high wind, and then, the sign was damaged. And I talked to the proprietor, and they were hoping to reinstall that sign. Do you know anything about the progress on that, and is it, how's that coming along? They have the right to, to reinstall the sign, correct, as originally set up?
My understanding is they have the right to reinstall it, and I, I don't have any information as to why that hasn't happened yet.
I could answer your question.
Great.
I think they found it's not practical, and they're going to do something else. Because I asked them when they had their opening.
I, I don't think the city would in any way hold up them installing their sign again. If, if they choose not to do it, then we would certainly work with them to find an, an alternative, but I don't think we would prevent them from reinstalling the sign.
I thought it was just a technical problem about not having the vent holes in the, in the fabric, and it was going to be something that would be solved easily. I guess, then, the last thing I was going to say is, I really appreciate all the energy that you did. Maybe it's been about a month and a half, or two months ago, in your retention visits with the record store on Wright Street. You put a lot of effort into that, and, you know, it's a business that, you know, is, you know, all the businesses downtown have value, and it's, I know that you put plenty of attention on trying to smooth the wafer retention of that building, so I appreciate that.
Sure, thank you.
Any other questions for Tom Carino? Danielle Chenoweth?
Thanks for your presentation. What's the status of residential at Lincoln Square? I believe the plan was actually to have those, the beginning of the construction, or maybe the completion by last fall, and haven't heard an update on that. I know there is some things that they're required to do in their development agreement. I haven't revisited that agreement recently, but I do know that they're up against those requirements.
Well, we, we have discussed it with ownership. I don't, again, I don't think the city would in any way prevent them from moving forward on that, and we've worked with them to, to get that done. They have talked about the residential component, but have not moved forward on it at this point. One interesting thing about their, the development agreement for Lincoln Square Village is that they need to make improvements and increase the value of the property before the development agreement kicks in, for lack of a better term. Their, the, the benefits for their development agreement is dependent on how much the property value increases. So, if the property value has not increased above a certain threshold, which I believe it has not done yet, any, any property value above a certain threshold, they would start receiving benefits. So, they, they actually have not received any benefit from, from that development agreement yet.
Oh, okay. It's really clear.
It's, it's, it's a, in other words, it's a self-fulfilling development agreement. If you invest money in the property, and your property taxes go up, then you would receive a portion of that back, and that has not happened yet.
Yeah, that's wise. Okay, thanks for the update.
Sure.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to new business. We have ordinance number 2007-05-036, an ordinance approving a major variance to allow a reduction in the east-side yard setback. I think this has been requested by Habitat for Humanity, is that correct? We have Robert Myers here to explain it.
Okay. Briefly, this is a, a request from Habitat for Humanity of Champaign County for a major variance to allow a side yard setback of three rather than five feet, so that they can build a house on a vacant lot, which is located at 1306 West Dublin Street, and that's in the King Park neighborhood. And the lot is owned by the City of Urbana, so we are the property owners. The lot is only 33 feet wide. In this zoning district, if this lot were subdivided today, it would need to be a minimum of 60 feet wide, so it gives you a sense of how narrow it is. And with two required five-foot side yard setbacks, they can only build a house that's no wider than 23 feet wide on this lot. That's extremely narrow building site, and if I can add parenthetically, it's practically unbillable in today's terms, but they're seeking to build a 26-foot wide, six, 26-foot-wide home. And so, we're, we believe because of the undersized lot, that it does meet the criteria for a variance, or a major variance. Just so you know, the city purchased the lot back in 1978 using community development block grant funds, block grant funds, and the city demolished a house that was significantly deteriorated on the site. We've owned it since then, and neighbors have reported over a period of time illegal dumping on the site. There are currently signs posted, no dumping. So, we feel like that this infill, the city staff feels like this infill construction will help in that regard as well. After April 18th, 2007 meeting, the Zoning Board of Appeals reviewed this case, and they voted unanimously to forward it to the city council with a recommendation for approval of the major variance. City staff likewise recommends for approval. City staff likewise recommends for approval.
Danielle.
I move approval of ordinance number 2007-05-036.
Second. Okay, motion by Chinowith, second by Barnes. Is there any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers-Sachs?
Yes.
Ms. Chinowith?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries, the ordinance is approved. Next, ordinance number 2007-05-037, an ordinance approving a major variance, and this is the one that Brigitte talked about on 311 West Springfield. Are you going to do that too, Robert?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that's okay with you. This is a request by Brigitte Pica to allow cars to back onto a street at 311 West Springfield Avenue. And this, the applicant plans to open a, a small retail knitting and yarn shop at this property, which is currently Zone B2, which is Neighborhood Business District, arterial. And parking would be on existing driveway. There's a house located here, so it would be, the parking would be in an existing residential type driveway. A minimum of one off-street parking space is required. The shop is, would be very small, it'd be 450 to 480 square feet. There's no room on the lot for customers to turn around, the customers' cars to turn around. It's really impossible, because the size of the lot's only 3,700 square feet, and it's a very tiny lot. It's very close to downtown. In fact, the comprehensive plan calls for future land use of, of central business. And in staff's analysis, we don't find that there would be any more traffic really backing on the Springfield Avenue than the existing residential home essentially. You have one, space for one car, possibly two, to back out. An average household today produces maybe 10 trips per household per day, and we don't feel like that it would be that much different. After April 18th, 2007 meeting, the Zoning Board of Appeals, they reviewed this case and voted unanimously to forward it to the city council with a recommendation for approval of the major variance, with the stipulation that the variance would be valid as long as the property is used for a retail knitting and yarn shop, and we have added that to the proposed ordinance. And city staff likewise recommends approval.
Mr. Roberts.
I move that we approve ordinance number 2007-05-037 concerning the major, major variance at 311 West Springfield Avenue.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Roberts, seconded by Ms. Chinowith. Any discussion? Mr. Roberts.
Yeah, I do. A friend of mine actually lived at that house for two years, and I backed out of that driveway many times. You know, I can't remember what the driveway's made out of. I can't remember if it's poured concrete or crushed gravel, and maybe you can tell me about that. But what I remember is that the sightlines are good, it's not an obstructed thing, and so it's not so hard to back out there. So it seems reasonable.
Ms. Chinowith.
I certainly support this, and I don't think the intensity of the use is going to cause problems with that. I do know, because I walk by that house every single day on my way to work, that there's quite a bit of parking during the day, not at night, because people park there at night, but during the day, there's sufficient parking on Birch Street, and also Elm Street, and so there shouldn't be a difficulty hosting a business there. This is exactly the kind of business we'd like to see in downtown, more specialty boutiques and things like that, so I certainly, you know, support this particular variance, and also give my blessing to the, to the business, and I hope it works out for the best.
Okay, would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers-Sachs?
Yes.
Ms. Chinowith?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
The motion carries. Ordinance number 2007-05-038, an ordinance approving modifications to the City of Urbana and Urbana-Champaign, Champaign County Home Consortium. We have John Schneider to explain this to us.
Basically, I, I sent council a memo, a cover memo with the proposed amendments on March 23rd that explained the amendments. Since that time, we've gone through the public hearing process, and we've received no objections to the amendments. The amendments are intended to basically do some housekeeping for older action plans, to get our budgets in line. And also, I think the main part of it would be the fact that we are wanting to obligate some older unobligated funds, funds that became unobligated, CDBG funds through projects that either weren't, didn't need all the funds for completion for the Harvey Street and sidewalk project. And, yeah, the Community Development Commission, at its April 24th meeting, voted unanimously to forward the ordinance to council with a recommendation for approval.
Are there any questions? Ms. Chinowith.
Is it, it was unfortunate to see Project 18 withdraw, and its request for funds, is that project actually going to move forward? Are we going to receive a compilation of report from Project 18, do you know? Because it's been really helpful to us in terms of making policy decisions.
Okay, that's, that's the, with the Urban League request, which is the third one down?
Okay.
That's, that would be-
Oh, it's not related to this? Okay, I thought it was from the annual action. I can, we can address that question later.
Any other questions?
Oh, I don't. I was going to make a motion.
Ah, you haven't made a motion yet?
I don't think so.
Is there a motion?
Yes, I would make a motion to approve ordinance number 2007-05-038, an ordinance approving modifications to the City of Urbana and the Urbana-Champaign, Champaign County Home Consortium for the year 2006-2007, the annual action plan, and further modifications to the fiscal year 2003, 2004 annual action plan, and the fiscal year 2004, 2005 annual action plan, and the fiscal year 2005, 2006 annual action plan.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Roberts, seconded by Mr. Lewis. Is there any discussion? If not, would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers-Sachs?
Yes.
Ms. Chinowith?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
That ordinance passes. Next, it's number 2007-05-039, an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of an Urbana Home Consortium Community Housing Development Organization Agreement. And this is the Urban League of Champaign County Development Corporation, their lease purchase program for fiscal 2006, 2007. Mr. Schneider.
Yes, this is, this is basically, this is a little bit delayed. Normally, we would have presented this for council approval much earlier, but due to staff vacancy, it's taken us a while to get this to council for approval. This is a continuation of a longstanding Urban League successful program by Urban League Development Corporation to provide lease purchase where the buyer actually leases the property. The Urban League purchases a property with the assistance of $20,000 in home funding, and then the buyer works with the Urban League to get into possession, for them to become bankable to actually purchase the property on their own from the Urban League. And Community Development Commission also forward this ordinance to council with a unanimous, unanimous vote for approval at its April 24th meeting.
Thank you. Anyone want to make a motion here?
I'd like to move approval of ordinance number 2007-05-039.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Barnes, seconded by Ms. Chinowith. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers-Sachs?
Yes.
Ms. Chinowith?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Okay, that ordinance passes. Next, we have an ordinance to revise the annual budget for a social service fund. This actually has to do with the Urban League. This is ordinance number 2007-05-040. Are you going to do that also?
Sure.
Mr. Schneider?
Be happy to. Basically, as you recall, this was an application for assistance in the last year, '06, '07, consolidated social service funding pool that did not get funded by council. The Urban League came back with a second request, a reduced request in the amount of $8,300 in August, during an August council meeting. And we have, staff has been working to find the funding, and fortunately, we've been able to find the funding. One of the, one of the things that happened was Project 18 basically declined, there's a, a letter attached to your memo, Project 18 declined the funding that was originally allocated. They were talking about a, a report card, and from my understanding, what Carol Elliott told me about it was, that they didn't have, the staff person that they were going to have produce a report card took another position, so they, they weren't in a position to produce a report card for that project. And then also, the finance department was able to find another $4,000 in city funds to allocate to this project, so that's what we're submitting to you.
Let's have a motion first. A motion by Ms. Chinowith?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Barnes. Ms. Chinowith has a question.
Yeah, my question is, we, we have never funded this program up until now, right? This is the, this would be the first allocation of funding?
Are you talking about for this fiscal year?
Just this program. No, just this particular program.
I don't think, have we, I don't think so. I think this is the first time, isn't it?
We have. Okay, so-
I can't remember.
It's mostly trying to jar my memory, because I know that we didn't fund it, we discussed it, the mayor requested that it be funded, and so I'm trying to figure out, are we funding something that already happened? Because it would be for fiscal year '06, '07, and there's also an existing funding request, and those two things aren't canceled out by each other? Or are we looking to fund it, that basically this funding pool would go to this program for this particular summer? And so I just need some sequence clarification.
John Schneider, go ahead.
My understanding was, is this is funding for fiscal year '06, '07. It's already been expended by the Urban League, but that would help them recoup the, the funding that they have expended. The new request is for '07, '08, which would be for the summer youth program for this upcoming year.
And the discussion took place because they said many of the students were from Urbana. So that's why we went off on our search for money, and I think it's, maybe got slightly lost in the shuffle here. Any other questions? Okay, we have a, a motion by, I guess it was Ms. Chinowith, seconded by Ms. Barnes. Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers-Sachs?
Yes.
Ms. Chinowith?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Okay, that ordinance passes. I hope you spent the money wisely. Okay, now we move on to appointments by the mayor. I have for Human Relations Commission, the student representative, Janice Mitchell, for a term ending June 30th, 2008, for Public Arts Commission Task Force, Jesse Knox, and for Urbana Free Library Board, Charlie Smythe, who's not here to vote for himself. So, is there a motion?
Yes, I move approval of this slate.
Second.
Okay, motion by Ms. Barnes, seconded by Mr. Lewis. Any questions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, these people are all appointed. Finally, we have a closed session to consider the appointment, employment, and compensation of specific employees of the city pursuant to Chapter 5, I guess, of the Illinois Comprehensive Statute, 120 slash 2C1. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
Yes, I make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Roberts, seconded by Ms. Barnes. This is just a straight voice vote, or is it a roll call? Roll call, please. Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers-Sachs?
Yes.